Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, October the 20th. This is your Multnomah County Board of Commissioners and our board meeting. Vice Chair Lori Stegman is excused today, and we have Commissioner Jaya Paul, who is virtual. So as you can tell, today's meeting is a hybrid board meeting, which means that some presenters and guests will appear in person and some will appear virtually. For those who are presenting virtually, please remember to mute your mic when you are not speaking, and when you present, make sure to unmute your mic and turn on your camera. We have no items on the consent agenda this morning, so we will move to public testimony.
Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters. This is a time for the board to hear public testimony, not for board deliberation. When it's your turn to speak, I will call your name and unmute you or call you to the presenter's table. I will set a timer for three minutes when you begin speaking and announce when your time is up, at which point, please wrap up your sentence. We have two people sign up virtually and six people in person. So we're going to start with the virtual, which is Thomas Bussey. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you'd like.
Good morning. My name is Tom Bussey. I'm a Multnomah resident. I'm a Libertarian nominee for Congressional District One. Formerly, I was an addiction counselor with a major aid service organization until I blew the whistle on fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption. In August 2022, Multnomah County announced a decision to accept and disperse a $3 million grant from CARE Organ to mass distribute a pharmaceutical product called Narcan. I reviewed the board's minutes and the budget, and at no time did the board ever decide to apply for this grant or accept and disperse the funds as required. CARE Organ paid $150 for Narcan doses to a company called Emergent Biosolutions for a generic drug that costs $5 to make. Right now, I can go down to my local Walgreens and purchase it for 40. One of the problems with CARE Organ is the Oregon Wealth Authority shielded its grants programs from the state's open meetings and public records law, turning Oregon Medicaid into a cesspool of dark money and conflicts. Popular media and regulatory captured entities such as the corrupted CDC falsely claim Narcan is life-saving on a population level. There are no prospective randomized controlled studies to back up this claim. Many experts believe Narcan availability enables drug use, but their voices, as are mine, are silenced. The situation is very similar to needle exchanges. If we look at the well-designed studies, needle exchanges are associated with a 22.5-fold increase in HIV seroconversion. Narcan overdose reversal statistics are biased because it is usually administered unnecessarily. When Narcan's manufacturer, Emergent Biosolutions, purchased the patent in 2017, it suited aggressively to force generics off the market and then jack up the price. Its marketing director stated at the time that the company viewed county health departments such as this one as untapped markets. Emergent started to subsidize corporate media outlets and funded fake patient advocacy groups. It also invested in a Mexican fentanyl factory through a subsidiary. Emergent got its start in 2001, selling anthrax vaccines to the Pentagon, when two of its board members have documented foreknowledge of the 2001 anthrax attacks. More recently, Emergent profited off the sale of the ACAM2000 smallpox vaccine just a year after a board member participated in a table talk exercise about a monkeypox bioterrorism attack. If you really want to address Oregon's drug epidemic, follow the money. Who is really profiting from millions of inflated Narcan sales charged to the taxpayer? Why are you paying $150 for a product that should cost 40? The answer to drugs is not more drugs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Eric Smith, but we have quite a few people who called in and then didn't give themselves usernames, so I'm just going to run down them really quickly. Eric, is this you? Hello, Eric, can you hear me? Eric, is this you?
If you're calling on the phone, could you please give yourself your actual name as your username so that we can find out who's waiting to testify? Thank you.
Is this Eric?
Let's skip Eric and go to the next person, and then Eric can make himself known.
All right. So next, we have in-person testimony. Kathleen Boniface, Cody Hermeling, Michael Wallensford.
My name is Cody Hermeling. I am a Portland resident, and I have been blind for 12 years now. Got into a car accident 12 years ago and was blind. I'm here today to ask you all to do your duty as councilmen to make sure that the sidewalks and whatnot are clear for people such as myself, blind individuals. I'm completely blind, can't see anything. And having tents or otherwise of people staying in the middle of sidewalks makes it quite difficult for me to even leave my house. I've been confined to basically a 2-3 block radius over the last two years, been verbally intimidated by people on the streets. Essentially, over the last couple of years, have been confined to no life. I would implore any of you to just, for a day, blindfold yourself. Just walk around your house, let alone outside in the public, and try to get anywhere without tents around, like to have your pathway blocked to get anywhere, grocery store, my work, just to go out anywhere. And I have to actually divert myself and my dog into the street and walk in traffic. It makes life impossible. I don't even know what to do. Luckily, I have somewhat of a support group that can help go get me groceries. Being blind should not make me confined to the prison of my own home. I don't know really what more to say.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in this morning.
My name is Kathleen Boniface, and I'm Cody's mother. And I recently, last year, moved into a condo around the corner from him. He's on Lovejoy, and I'm on Irving. And last night, we met some other disabled people at my son's bar, and I tried to walk home, and there's a tent. I had been dropped off. There's a tent blocking the sidewalk. You never know. The problem is not just that they're there, but even when they're cleared, they come back. So there's no way to navigate or to tell him a route to take that's safe. I mean, it is an impossible situation, and it's dangerous for him and his dog. The dog is a guide dog. Now, if the dog is distracted constantly or licking a meth paper or chicken bones or needles or garbage and refuse, it endangers both of them. The sidewalks are for pedestrians, and it was through government that camping was allowed throughout the city. You all allowed this to happen, and it's so unconscionable, and it's not sustainable. The amount of tents that were given out and the way that this has been handled has impacted lives so detrimentally. I cannot tell you the pain I feel to see my son depressed and unable to do the things that he trained to do. For example, to train to have a guide dog, you have to learn how to walk the streets with a cane. In today's world, that's going to be impossible. Cody used to be given coordinates, and he had to go and meet his accessibility trainer, the man who was teaching him to walk the sidewalks. Today, if he's given coordinates, he has no idea where he's walking, how safe it's going to be because of all of the impassable streets and the problems with angry people. Now, the law says that you can't drink on the sidewalks, but you can do meth, you can leave garbage, you can urinate and defecate. I mean, the problems are so outrageous. I think everybody in the city is aware of it, but we're asking you today to really think about what my son said to you, to put a blindfold on and try to navigate. You try it. It's impossible, and it's unconscionable. Thank you for your time today. And Sharon, Marin, I believe you're my commissioner, and I'd just like to thank you for your time today, and the rest of you council members, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Who's next?
My name is Michael Wallingford. I live in Amontavilla. I'm a local 16 member and a Portland native. I was born here. I can't go anywhere without being accosted or dealing with other people's, you know, their problems, the screaming, the yelling. It makes it hard to even want to leave. I do anyway, mainly because my wife makes me. I only have a few places that I like to go to, and now even going to the max is difficult. Every step I take is a hope and a prayer. While I'm walking down, you know, I'm concentrating on my cane, I'm concentrating on the unevenness of sidewalks as they are because we love our trees here, and trees knock up the roots But stepping on someone's face, I guess the face is better than their feces, but it's unconscionable. It's gross, and I'm just tired. I'm tired of it. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming this morning.
Next up, we have Injured and Pissed Off, Lightning Super Karma Lab, and Charles Bridge
I think he wants to hang out with us today, and I don't blame him one bit. Ready when you are.
My real name is Injured and Pissed Off. I had nothing to do with those other two blind people that were just here. They seemed polite and pleasant, but it's not going to be to their satisfaction by any means because the city's been operating like it has. Talking about the city, I came here to say that I spoke at City Hall June 29, AM session, 9:30 June 29, and I was speaking about the new McNoma County Board or the new McNoma County Courthouse. It's a $100 million building, apparently, and they've got a fuel truck that pulls up outside of it here lately. Like, it was the 9th of September, two days before 9/11, they had vehicles parked over the sidewalks, I guess, to keep delivery trucks, and they also had them taped off in yellow tape. You couldn't even access the sidewalk on that side of the building. Those disabled people were saying that the sidewalks are supposed to be used for the public, and yet they were clearly taping it off. I guess, you know, they were Homeland Security might have been worried about the 9/11 deal, but the city auditor, the taxpayers been paying for that renovation, putting those gasoline tanks, there might even be two gasoline tanks in the sidewalk. No gas station under Oregon law would be allowed to do that because they'd have to put it on their own property. They couldn't just put it on the public right away and block it like they've been doing. Like I said, they put vehicles over top of the manhole covers, and then they taped the vehicles off to keep people from even walking down the sidewalk, which is totally absurd, but the cities can do anything that they want. But the city auditor ought to investigate, well, if they can't dump fuel there, what did the taxpayers pay for? They certainly wouldn't put up with having their $100 million courthouse blown up. Thank you.
My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Karma Lab. Again, the situation in Los Angeles on the city council. Again, Kevin DeLeon is refusing to resign, so do you, President Biden. I think he gives you the middle finger. Again, do you... Let me explain that it's going to be very interesting for Mr. DeLeon to stay there, especially with the Black Lives Movement Matters movement not very happy. And this is going to get very interesting in Los Angeles. Again, I'm expecting in Los Angeles, as you know, above that, the council members, there's a RICO Act cloud hovering over them that was already brought forward in the year of 2020 against one of the council members, and I anticipate that there will be a RICO conspiracy charge brought to bench against Nury Martinez. I'll be watching this very closely, but I assume that's going to happen. So Kevin DeLeon, you're in some hot water here. I would highly recommend you do resign, and you stay out of the middle of this because this is only scratching the surface right now, and it's only going to get much more interesting in the next few months. Now, again, on Twitter, is Elon Musk going to buy Twitter for $44 billion? It hasn't closed, and I think he will have to pay the full price, $44 billion. I think it's only worth about maybe $35 billion at this time. The true value of what that company is at this time is Elon Musk. He steps away, it'll plummet down to around $30 billion. Elon, I told you not to go into this deal, but since you're locked into it, I'm recommending that you do close at the $44 billion, but you add something to it. The board of directors from Twitter will put $1 billion into Tesla each year. They can remove that billion after the third year. They're going to do that for 10 years. That way, Twitter and Tesla will both win at the end of the day. They can't lose by doing that. They know that you're going to pay an overvalued price. They know you were locked into it. You're not happy, but they can make it a win-win. Think about that and add that into the deal and then close at $44 billion. Thank you.
Well, Charles is coming up. Apparently, the YouTube link isn't working this morning if people are trying to get on. Do we know, Tasia, if that's been fixed?
Yeah, we're working on it. We're having a lot of technical difficulties today.
We are having some technical difficulties today, and the YouTube channel is not working, among other things. However, if you are out there in TV land, you can listen on your phone. You dial 1-415-655-0001 and enter the access code 25931317225, and our amazing comms team is putting that out on social media right now, so if people would like to listen, they can. Charles, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Gaffory, for that extra bit of effort to ensure public access. I am Bridge Crane Charles Simka Johnson, and it was very bittersweet seeing that two blind people made their way here. You know, it's very unfortunate that mostly within the city limits, there are areas of the sidewalk that are so severely and frequently obstructed that disabled people, particularly blind, but also people who use mobility assistance devices, have had to seek an attorney and sue the local government. Of course, we already have a case, the United States of America versus the City of Portland, that's been going on for about 10 or 12 years now, no, maybe like 13 years, because the Portland Police Department has a documented pattern and practice of not being able to properly engage with people that have mental health crises or are exhibiting symptoms of a mental health crisis. So your parallel body over there in City Hall has a lot to work on. It seems that their attorney feels that y'all need to be added as co-defendants in this ADA accessibility case. I guess the primary reasoning there is the weird way we do have a bifurcated structure for service provision. Essentially, the city, maybe by their argument, is whining that not enough is being done to house or assist people whose behavior is so crappy, they block and intimidate blind and mobility impaired people. We have, you know, generally, I don't think we use the criminal justice system very well, but if you block and intimidate a disabled person, we can open up some of the mothballed bunks at the jail campus and let you have a couple nights of retreat at the Inverness local jail campus once you've intimidated and obstructed a blind person. Now, that's expensive, there's booking, and there's all that, but some of these costs are not per-person costs. We can extend them out and say it costs $70 per night, but the marginal cost to put a meth-addicted bonehead who intimidates disabled people in jail is almost zero. Better that we should find treatment for them, but we have the question that was brought up by the first presenter virtually about how much are we paying for Narcan dosages? So your plate is a little full, too, like the people across the river. I hope that you'll be, and your legislative team will be constructively working with Wyden, Merkley, Von Meacham, etc., so we can get some more federal money to help these addicted people, and especially the non-addicted people who just have behavioral issues and deserve housing. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public testimony, and I'll move on to R1. R1, Proclaiming October 2022 Oregon Archives Month in Multnomah County, Oregon.
We're in a board meeting now, ladies. We need some assistance to get things moving along here. So Commissioner Meyer moves. Commissioner Vega Peterson seconds. Approval of R1. Good morning. It's our favorite archive friends. I have been very busy boxing my things up to send to you all. Thank you. Some gems in there, I am sure. Good morning.
We have been anxiously awaiting them.
Yeah.
I feel, I think there's been a missed opportunity. I think we should have walk-on music next year. I think so. Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. In a few moments, Teri is going to read the proclamation of October as Oregon Archives Month. Before that, I'm going to share with you a few highlights from the past year in the archives. But first, I would like to make a big fuss about something. Our archivist, Teri Baxter, is currently serving as president of the Society of American Archivists. This is the oldest and largest professional organization of archivists in North America. The president is elected by the organization's members. I feel extremely fortunate every day to work with Teri. He is a tireless advocate of social equity in archives and is dedicated to constantly illuminating and improving access to the historical record. His knowledge of Multnomah County archives is incomparable. I'm always learning from him, and I would like to give him, if we can, I'm not sure if this is done, a big round of applause for his accomplishment as peer-elected president Okay, and now this. Regarding the digital archives, I am the digital archivist, so that's my area. Our digital preservation system is now in its third year of implementation. We track metrics by fiscal year. Between 2021 and 2022, the number of sessions on the public digital archives website increased 54%. We are currently preserving around 300,000 electronic archival records in more than 300 different record formats, and we are adding records every day. This year, the archives procured its first book scanner. This will allow us to digitize older volumes such as historical records as well as larger format records, and you'll see one of those in a minute. We can then post them online in our digital archives, making these records much more accessible. Instead of making a long drive to the Eon Building, any member of the public anywhere in the world will be able to see these records wherever they have an internet connection. Our electronic records management analyst, Deidra Thiemann, has spearheaded the renaissance of our social media presence. This began in May. We now regularly post on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, and Tumblr. Since the social media program resumed, our number of Twitter followers has increased 24%. Our most popular social media posts were on the topics of Electronic Records Day and, as it happens, Archives Month. I have a visual aid. I might have to ask Teri to be Vanna White.
I have some skills.
In the spirit of this time of year, this is the photograph that we used for Archives Month posts. It comes from our election records collection. The image is of a truck offering free transportation for voters. The caption on the bottom reads, "Truck voting advertisement encouraging vote on annexation, April 5, 1950." And for any participants in the archives contest, our internal outreach program, this will be on the test. So this, this... So this, this, so it's election season, it's Archives Month. We used the scanner to digitize this, and it became our most popular social media post. If this doesn't blow your mind, I don't know what will. Okay. One more from me.
We love Visual Aid, so this is great.
We also have another time of season ramping up. This is the original artwork for the 1987 budget cover. I have to admit, and I'm embarrassed to say this, I haven't been to Oaks Park, but I think that that is what this is showing. But anyone can correct me. Okay. And lastly, from me.
Are you done?
I'm done with this one, yeah. Has everyone, everyone enjoyed this one? Okay.
I'm just looking for Christian Elkin, our budget director, and I think she, oh, she's gone. Well, we'll have to, somebody needs to call her to come back in. She needs to take a look at that.
Oh, finally, Teri and Deidre have been codifying our processes for collecting artifacts. These require a specific set of descriptive, collective, and preservative measures. So now Teri is going to share such an artifact and then read the proclamation, as well as any other remarks he would like to say, now that I've droned on. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Teri Baxter, one of the archivists with the records program, and the artifact that Paige selected for me is the county seal, which we'd, there's an article in the County Lines, an old newsletter for the county, 1969, about the county seal and the history of it, but we couldn't find it. So we asked around, looked around, still couldn't find it, and then had a box of old seals, military seal, something else, and here's the old county seal right here. And so if you need, if you need any document stamped, we can stamp that for you right here with the old county seal. So before I read the proclamation, I'd just like to thank you, Chair Kofory, for 14 years of strong support for the Archives program and strong leadership for the county in general. It's been great working with you, and I'll be interested to see what scheming and dreaming you've got going on in the future, so.
Here, here.
So here's the proclamation, proclaiming October 2022 Oregon Archives Month in Multnomah County, Oregon. The Multnomah County Board of Commissioners finds the records of Multnomah County, the state of Oregon, the Pacific Northwest, and the nation are crucial to our understanding of the past and in planning for our common future. Archival institutions have a responsibility to provide the public with access to their records, and it is a goal of these institutions to increase public awareness of the vital role they play in safeguarding knowledge of our intellectual, cultural, social, and governmental heritage. Archival records document activities of people, businesses, governments, and organizations. They aspire to provide context to our histories, to provide evidence of our common and individual rights and obligations, and to inform our collective journey toward a just and equitable future. During Oregon Archives Month, we celebrate the value of Multnomah County's historic record, publicizing the many ways archival records enrich our lives and recognizing those who maintain our community's archival records. Now, therefore, the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners proclaims October 2022 as Oregon Archives Month in Multnomah County, Oregon, and encourages all citizens to discover the diverse documentary resources maintained by the varied archival institutions in Multnomah County and to explore their relationship to community and cultural memory.
Thank you. Thank you all. Commissioners, questions or comments? We are going to start with Commissioner Myron.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Teri and Paige. It is such a great presentation, as always, just love the visuals. And Teri, congratulations on that tremendous honor of being selected as President for the Society of American Archivists. That is, that is really, really impressive, and, and just appreciate all the work you do here. We have you here in Multnomah County, so strong work. I love that we have a book scanner now, you know, that's, that's excellent, and that we got to see such great visuals. And I was very impressed by the, the 54% increase in the digital, the digital scans that are, are being added to the archives now. It is wonderful that, that people now can have that broad of access to, to our records. Although I have to say, when I, you know, thinking of archives in my head, they have to, they should involve like dust and boxes and things like that, and when you said you were going through the boxes to find the old county seal, I'm like, okay, that's an archive. So, but it really is great work in increasing the inclusion and access for people, and just really particularly wanted to call out that part of the proclamation that said that these archival records really aspire to provide context to our histories, to provide evidence to our common and individual rights and obligations, and to inform our collective journey forward to a just and equitable future. You don't know where you're going if you don't know where you come from, and that says it so perfectly. Thank you again, and I know my staff has really appreciated the opportunity to work with you and your help in responding to community inquiries, particularly the Alaska Native Community, and just want to say thank you for that.
Commissioner Jayapal?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Teri and Paige. So before I comment, I just want to let you all know that I am among the people experiencing technical difficulties this morning, and in particular, I can't see you, I can't see the room, and I was not able to see the visual aid or the artifact, so I feel like I really missed out here.
We'll take some pictures and send them to you.
Perfect, there we go. But just really want to appreciate you. Teri, congratulations on being President of the Society. That really is such an honor. And, you know, I feel like every day for the past week or two weeks or maybe for, you know, forever, I feel like almost every day, there is a reason to acknowledge and restate how important it is to understand our past, how that is the foundation for creating a different future. So, you know, for me, this program is an integral piece of that and really deserves the recognition and the appreciation that, that you're getting today, and thrilled that the social media is, is taking off. I think it's super exciting that people respond to archives in that way, because I think it really helps to create a culture where we acknowledge this importance of history. So again, thanks so much for the work and for today's presentation.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you so much for being here today, and Teri, yes, congratulations on that. I think it's just so great that we in Multnomah County are so lucky to have people who are seen as leaders in their field nationwide, and, and I just appreciate that so much, and thank you, Paige, for bringing it up, because I think probably it wouldn't have been acknowledged. So thank you for having us celebrate, Teri, today, and thank you for your work. You know, I think it's so appropriate that we do this, we're doing this today, and we had the Oregon Historical Society's Levy Briefing on Tuesday, where we were talking about the importance of the work that they do in helping us remember history, and, and these go hand in hand, right? Like the work that you're doing with archiving such important information that gives a picture that helps us understand through documented evidence of what life was like, what things were like, what was happening as we, you know, really search to make connections to our past is really important. And I was thinking, and you don't have to answer this in full, but it just was really, I was thinking about, how do you, how do you archive a pandemic? Right? How do you, how do you, in like, you know, 30 years from now, how, what are, what are the things that people are going to be looking back at, are searching for, to really understand what it was like to be alive in 2020, 2021, 2022, when we were going through such a, such a, you know, unprecedented event? And so, I mean, and I think of the power of like really understanding that is going to be in the materials, in the actual pieces of our history, and, and the role that you have and all archivists have in protecting that is really important and powerful. So I just want to thank you so much.
I'll add my thanks and my congratulations. Do we need to call you President Baxter now? Because that is kind of cool.
Yeah, that's what it is.
It's, it was really exciting, and again, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner, because I think, Paige, if you had not let us know, we wouldn't have had this opportunity to celebrate you. And you're, it is really exciting that your peers from around the country have recognized your brilliance, like we long have here at Multnomah County. This, as you know, and this is, since this is going to be the last time I'm going to talk about it, and maybe some of you haven't heard, I started my career as an archivist in Walla Walla at my college library, working, well, I wasn't an archivist, I was a fake baby archivist, but I got to, it really helped digging through those boxes of papers and, and sorting things and making sense out of, you know, pile of slides from the 50s, putting them into, into order and trying to figure out who was in them. It gave me such a deep connection to my school and to my community in Walla Walla that I would not have had, had I not had that experience. And one of the sets of slides that I went through was from the class of 1950, I think, and it, 40, early 40s, anyway, it included Margy Bulle's parents, who had gone to Whitman. And so it was really fun to see young people, people who are now passed, but who were young and lively and vibrant, and to learn what it was like to go to my college 40 years before I went there. So I have a deep appreciation for Archives and especially love to celebrate you both on Archive Month. Thank you so much, and thank you for the kind words. And with that, Tasia, will you take a vote?
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Jayapal?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
And Chair Kofory?
Aye. I'm sure that was, we were all waiting on pincinails to see whether it would pass, and it did. The proclamation is adopted. Happy Archives Month.
Thank you.
R2, Board of Health Information Briefing on Banning the Sale of Flavored Tobacco and Nicotine Products.
As our team is approaching the table, I will give some opening remarks this morning. Today, we meet in our role as a local public health authority to hear recommendations that I requested back in August from our county's Public Health Department for some policy language, language that would stop the sale of flavored tobacco and nicotine products in Multnomah County. We originally intended to receive this information in September, however, shortly before that briefing was scheduled to occur, a judge issued an order enjoining the enforcement of a Washington County ordinance banning the sale of flavored nicotine products. At that point, we felt it was prudent to hit pause so that we could do a careful review of that decision, and we have now realized that the court's decision does not apply to Multnomah County. So we are moving forward to resume our conversation today about the potential ban of flavored nicotine products in Multnomah County. There is nothing new or novel about a community taking steps to regulate the sale of flavored nicotine products. 345 communities have passed such ordinances. This can be done, and action can meaningfully curb the rate at which youth start smoking and vaping. This is clearly an incredibly important issue for our community. We've heard from many, many hundreds of people already about their thoughts, both in support and in opposition to this policy, even before the Health Department has had their chance to give us a recommendation, which is happening today. In fact, more than 900 people have responded to our online survey, and I'm sure that my fellow commissioners have received an equal number of letters and phone calls and emails as I have on this topic. There is still, public testimony is still open. If you would like to let us know how you feel about the potential ban of flavored tobacco products, please fill out the survey by visiting the Multnomah County website, which is multco.us, and click on the flavored nicotine rules link. Thank you all for being here, and Jessica, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Guernsey. I use she/her/hers pronouns, and I am your Public Health Director. It's a pleasure to be here before you today. I'm joined by a few esteemed guests, colleagues, and public health champions. We have Carrie McFarlane here from our tobacco program, Ms. Cheryl Carter from our Multnomah County Public Health Advisory Board, and then I believe we have, we have Hua Dogo online from the Achieve Coalition. Is that correct? Okay, perfect. Well, we'll get started. Next slide, please. So as the Chair mentioned, we're here today to come back to you to present our public health recommendations with regards to the sale of flavored tobacco, including menthol. We're going to spend some time going back into the, speaking of archivists, what brought us here, what got us here. As you all know, this has been a long journey with the fight against tobacco, how this relates to our actions to declaring public health or racism a public health issue, and what our specific recommendations are as a public health division. Next slide, please. So just talking a little bit about the, the what got us here, I know that much of this is going to be repetition, but it is worth repeating in terms of its importance in the practice of public health. There are very few products or incidents that cross over so many health outcomes contributing to leading causes of death and years of life lost. Tobacco use is the number-one preventable cause of early death. We know that both locally and nationally, that still persists. We absolutely know that particularly flavored products are starter products for youth, which we know gets people hooked on tobacco products and creates a whole new generation of folks using these products. And we absolutely know that there has been racist practices used specifically in the Black, Hispanic, Latinx, and Native community for decades around marketing, sale, and positioning of products in the community. So we'll talk more about that, but I really want to center a lot of this conversation today around that and what our recommendations are. And I've been in front of you many times over the last three years talking about COVID, and hopefully you all remember me saying, "It's COVID today, it's going to be something else tomorrow." And while we need to prepare for emergencies like COVID, one of the ways we need to do that is address the underlying causes of health inequities and health disparities, and that includes what we're bringing forward today around flavored tobacco. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give a few examples of the areas that I talked about today. This is a picture, obviously, that's incredibly disturbing. This is an example of community targeting in the Black community in terms of strategic positioning of events, giving away free products, coupons, advertising, that we know the tobacco is, the tobacco industry is so good at. You've heard myself and my colleagues talk about the tobacco playbook. This really is, in public health, one of the key corporate playbooks that we know have been used by other, other agencies and other products to make sure that there's a targeting of communities to increase use. So this is one terrible example of that. As you can see on the left, the, in the text, this particular ad is talking about stopping menthol and saving lives. So again, this is a very intentional practice with clear roots in racist advertising. Next slide, please. And I, of course, would be absolutely remiss in not recognizing the many, many, many community partners and staff that have elevated this issue for years. So I want to thank, there's many people in the audience today, both staff and community members, faith leaders, that have elevated this issue around flavored tobacco, including menthol, for years. So I thank them for their patience and their persistence, because this has clearly been a community priority for many years, and this is an example of our REACH programs advertising for No Menthol Sunday, of which the Chair has been involved in, and many of you have been involved in, warehouses of faith have led locally this campaign. And again, it is needed to, we need to have intentionality around what these campaigns are about and have fights against it, like this advertising campaign from REACH. Next slide, please. So this quote, I'm sure, is probably familiar, and it's very, very painful to read, and while it's from 1981, it still reverberates across the community, and I will say, as a parent, this is quite, quite shocking even today to read, so I'm just going to go ahead and read it. "Today's teenager is tomorrow's potential regular customer, and the overwhelming majority of customers first begin to smoke while in their teens. At least a part of the success of Marlboro Red during the most rapid growth period was because it became the brand of choice among teenagers and then stuck with them as they grew older." So I don't think anybody has any question about the intentionality of, of, again, the tobacco playbook, but this is extended across decades of advertising and marketing. Next slide, please. As I said in the beginning of the presentation, I really want to make sure to tie this to your direction in 2021 to decla- really want to make sure to tie this to your direction in 2021, to declare racism a public health crisis, which in fact it is, and it manifests in many different ways. So this particular recommendation that's coming forward around the restricted sale of flavored tobacco, including menthol, directly ties to what it means to address racism as a public health crisis. And I'd like to invoke the words of our Director, Ebony Clark. She often says, "You know, pay more attention and look at what I do, not what I say." So again, this is an example of acting around racism as a public health crisis. Next slide, please. A little bit more about the tactics. Juul, Juul has been in the news quite a bit. You all are familiar with this particular company. So just a couple other examples of the racist tactics that are used. This particular news headline cites the work that Juul did to pitch to Native American tribes, discounted use, along with smoking cessation programs in several different tribes. So very, very, very thinly masked tactics. Again, wholeheartedly rejected by tribes, but the attempt was there nonetheless. I'm sure you all are also familiar with the massive settlement that Juul just reached an agreement on nationally, again, solely centered on their tactics around advertising and sales to hook youth. So while we all know this is a very, very dangerous product, these products are dangerous, these advertising and marketing schemes still persist. Next slide, please. So we wanted to bring just some of the data to you all. You all have seen much of this. This just shows the use, the tobacco use in high school students. It shows a clear decline in smoking over the last few decades, ending in 2018. And then you can see the intersection with, again, the intentional marketing development and promotion of e-cigarettes that do include flavors. Again, very specifically to target youth use, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit, but you can see that intersection occurring in about 2012.
Do we have more current numbers than this? I'm just curious. This is the most current. This is really, because it's a long time ago. I've just, I'm actually quite curious, because my, I was talking to my daughter about this last night, and she said that she feels like everyone she knows smokes.
Yeah.
Cigarettes, not just, I mean, vape, yes, huge, but cigarettes as well. So I just was, yeah, I was horrified.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, back to more recent lawsuits, I'm sure you all are aware that Portland Public Schools has also filed suit against Juul specifically for the student population in PPS. All of my kids have gone to PPS schools and report the same sort of trends. And, you know, you've heard me say this before, I consider myself a fairly responsible parent, and even with the most work that a parent can do, it's insurmountable in terms of the marketing and the availability of products. So it is, you know, the choices we make are based on the choices that we have, and when the environment is inundated with these products and advertising and the flavors that Carrie will talk about, it is virtually impossible to navigate. Next slide, please. So a little bit more on youth vaping, to your point, Chair Kefory. So we know that at least more than one in four 12th graders report vaping in the past 30 days. Almost all youth who use tobacco are using flavored products, which, you know, I think is a moment to pause around. That is a really important data point. We see massive confusion among consumers who make the vape products. People don't know if they're regulated. Some people think of them as safer. There's a lot of co-opting of language around safer use, and there's a lot we actually don't know yet, and a lot we do know in terms of the harm. And again, that bridge to lifelong smoking. And we absolutely know that this impacts, this tobacco use and vaping impacts developing brains of young people, which we know is, you know, careful environment well into our early 20s and lifelong, but particularly in the adolescent years. Next slide, please. So it's not going to be a surprise to hear that our Surgeon General declared a call to action several years ago around the increasing concerns about youth vaping. In 2018, the Surgeon General Jerome Adams stated that youth vaping had now become a public health problem of epidemic proportions. And even in our recent years of our battle against COVID, the current Surgeon General is engaged in fighting youth nicotine addiction, understanding that this continues to be a critical front on all health outcomes. In particular, he highlights how nicotine use is related to untreated youth depression and mental health concerns, and how we need to do more nationwide, ideally, to stop youth vaping while young brains are still developing. Next slide, please. I'm going to talk a little bit about hookah use, and I just want to make a distinction here. I am going to talk about the general harms of hookah use. I think it's important to make the distinction between the cultural practice and the individual use of hookahs versus some of the establishments that utilize flavored tobacco products in hookah use. So we know that there are social aspects and flavors that are popular among young adults. Up to 40% of college students have identified this as a preferred use. There's massive misconception that hookah is filtered and not harmful. That is not true. That is not what we know about the effects. We also know that tobacco smoke is inhaled plus coal smoke from hookah devices. And what that translates to, and these visuals are from a media campaign that we did about 10 years ago?
Almost.
Yeah, about 10 years ago. You probably recognize the billboards, but what we do know about the use of hookahs is that one cigarette equals about 600 milliliters of smoke, and then one hour of hookah use equals about 90,000 milliliters of smoke. We know that the CDC warns of similar toxins to cigarettes plus intense exposure patterns. That includes nicotine, tar, carcinogens, and heavy metals. And again, what we're really talking about is how that relates to the use of flavors in hookah establishments, and we're not talking about the general individual cultural practice of hookah use that, as far as I know, in many individuals' homes, does not include actual flavor use. Next slide, please. So as Chair Kefory mentioned, we are not alone, thank goodness, in pushing forward the important recommendation that we're going to give to you all today. Hundreds of jurisdictions across the nation have adopted similar restrictions for the same reasons that we're talking about today. Some of them vary depending on the locality, but we all have the shared concern around, again, how this intersects with the leading causes of death, years of life lost, and all of our shared interest in addressing racism as a public health crisis. Ultimately, what this boils down to is disallowing the sale of flavored tobacco will help us fend off the next generation of smokers and help create nicotine-free future generations. Next slide, please. And then this is just a list of jurisdictions that's in your slide deck where you can see how many different localities have adopted this. And this is considered sort of the gold standard for public health policy in the tobacco realm from all the major public health institutions in the U.S. Next slide, please. And just more of a list.
It can't even fit on one slide.
No, we can't. So I'm going to, next slide, please. Sorry, it was a big list. I'm going to touch on the specifics of the recommendation now, and then I'm going to turn it over to Carrie McFarland. So what our recommendation is that we were asked to bring to you is the ban, to ban the sale of flavored tobacco and nicotine products. And this specifically would reduce access to flavored tobacco products, adopt a sales restriction within the tobacco retail license program. At the time of implementation, the regulation would end retail sales of flavored tobacco products at licensed stores, and we would work with partners to increase access to culturally appropriate quitting services. So that is the sort of meat of the matter, as you might say. Next slide, please. And then I want to spend a minute on the specifics of the recommendation definitions, and I'm going to go ahead and read these aloud. For our recommendation, we are describing or defining flavored as a distinguishable or distinctive natural or artificial taste, flavor, smell, or aroma, other than tobacco, that emanates from or is imparted by a tobacco product, a component of a tobacco product or a tobacco product's smoke or vapor at any time prior to or during consumption. The term flavored includes but is not limited to mint, menthol, wintergreen, fruit, candy, honey, cocoa, chocolate, herb, spice, vanilla, liquors, and any and all other distinguishable or distinct natural or artificial taste, flavor, smell, or aromas. And then the definition for tobacco products includes any product containing, made or derived from tobacco or nicotine, natural or synthetic, that is intended for human consumption by any means, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, pipe tobacco, shisha, hookah tobacco, snuff chewing tobacco, dipping tobacco, beethes, or any other preparation of tobacco or nicotine. So again, next slide, please. We are recommending a ban on flavored tobacco, and this does remove some products from store shelves. This would fall under our existing tobacco retail licensing program, and public health has the authority to regulate how retailers sell tobacco products and which type of products are sold. And this is subject to state and federal preemption. If the sale of flavored tobacco products were banned in our county, the products pictured above would no longer be allowed to be sold by our retail, by our licensed retailers. And I know that Carrie has a prop that'll better describe what some of these products are. Next slide, please. So without stating the obvious, we, you know, know that banning flavored tobacco and having these sort of regulations will improve community health. What we know already is that a study reviewing adopted flavor policies nationwide showed between 25 to 64 of tobacco users indicated they would quit after a ban, and 6% reduction in youth use shortly after the ban. Among tobacco users ages 18 to 24 in San Francisco, they found a reduction from 81% using a flavored product to 69% post-policy. And then in Ontario, Canada, we found that, they found that the ban, that they found that 63% of menthol smokers had a quit attempt in the year after implementation versus 43% of other smokers. Next slide, please. And then just some of the additional impacts of banning the sale of flavored tobacco. We know that this, the reduction in flavors will, it reduces the masking of the harshness of tobacco having the flavors. So this is one of the impacts of having that ban in place. It decreases the odds of the next generation ever using tobacco products at a community level. And again, you all have heard me say many times, that's a big part of our role, is that community level prevention. It increases quitting attempts, especially for the communities that I talked about, particularly Black, Native, Hispanic, Latinx communities, where there's been that intentional marketing. And it just reduces overall tobacco use, and thus, for us presently, that's particularly poignant in the realm of COVID influenza and the respiratory illness season. And as I've said, it's COVID today. It's something else tomorrow. This helps us address those baseline underlying causes of disease. Next slide, please. And with that, I am turning it over to Carrie McFarland.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Kefory Commissioners. I'm Carrie McFarland from your Tobacco Control and Prevention Program. It's been a minute since I've been in front of you to talk about commercial tobacco prevention, so glad to be picking this back up. As part of my role in our program, I manage the day-to-day operations and staffing of tobacco retail licensing. So I'm going to talk a little bit about tobacco retail licensing, as well as some of the questions we've been receiving and hearing, as I believe you have, about this proposed policy. So let's start with the universe of licensed tobacco retailers right here in Multnomah County. We have about 771 current licenses. That includes around 400 convenience stores, 100 bars and restaurants, 82 grocery stores, 50 tobacco shops, 42 gas stations, 32 liquor stores, 27 pharmacies, 20 vape shops, three hookah lounges, and two adult entertainment venues. The categories that I just read off are given to us by our retailers. They self-report that data when they file for their application for license, as well as on an annual basis when they renew an existing license. Next slide, please. So our annual fee of $683 covers the cost of the program's operations and services to retailers to ensure that they can maintain their privilege to sell tobacco products in Multnomah County. We offer trainings to our retailer's community to ensure that they're aware of local, state, and federal requirements around the sale of tobacco products. Our services include quarterly trainings, currently we're doing those virtually, as well as a self-paced online training and quiz activity, as well as regular email correspondence with news of regulatory action at the federal or state level. We also use our email newsletter to share compliance updates and resources. We produce educational materials and communications in both English and Korean, and any other language as requested by a retailer. Next slide, please. We use the license and civil penalty fees to fund the implementation of this evidence-based practice in tobacco prevention. Our goals, since the start of the program in 2016, are to increase retailer knowledge and compliance with all the rules and regulations governing the sale of tobacco, and most importantly, from a public health perspective, to reduce youth access to tobacco in our community. If a sales restriction of flavored tobacco products was adopted, we would inform our retailers and help them to make the changes to their product sales. Next slide, please. Well, the next slide would show a graphic of various types of inspections that we conduct. And the inspection type that I'd like to talk about is our routine inspection, and that is the inspection that we would utilize to ensure compliance if a flavored ban was adopted. Each tobacco retailer is inspected at least one time every year during regular business hours to make sure there are no violations of any of the rules. If an inspector found a prohibited flavored tobacco or nicotine product for sale, he or she would write a remediation plan for the retailer to correct that violation. That retailer would then have a recheck inspection to ensure that the flavored products are no longer being sold and that the violation is cleared. At that point, no penalty would be issued. In January of 2018, when the Oregon law raising the legal sales age for tobacco went from 18 to 21 years old, we started inspecting our licensed tobacco retailers to check their compliance with age-restricted sales. Unfortunately, our 18, 19, and 20-year-old undercover youth inspectors are still sold tobacco and nicotine products 17% of the time. Since this analysis was completed at the end of our fiscal year, June 30, we've seen, unfortunately, a significant increase in illegal sales. As of Monday of this week, our staff reported that our youth inspectors are being sold illegally tobacco products 25% of the time in our inspections currently in the field. Youth in our community know exactly where to go to buy these products, flavored or not. If a sales restriction of flavored tobacco and nicotine products was adopted, it would change the type of product our youth inspector would be asking for, and hopefully reduce the illegal sales of tobacco products to youth. Next slide, please. So let's answer a few questions that came up at Dr. Vines's briefing last month and are continuing to be raised in communities all over the country as they consider this health issue and how best to address it. What about online sales? Online sales of tobacco products, such as cigarettes and chew, have been and are continuing to be not allowed in Oregon. And as of January of this year, the Oregon law was updated. And as of January of this year, the Oregon law was updated to ensure that e-cigarettes and vapes are no longer sold online. Next slide please. And what about enforcement? Specifically, what about racist enforcement? Racism is absolutely at the heart of this issue. Tobacco companies have been allowed free access to our most vulnerable communities despite holding them in low regard, as Jessica shared earlier. We must address racist actions wherever they are found. That said, we specifically address these concerns in our policies and our practices. A public health bureaucrat with the power of a clipboard enforces the rules of tobacco retail licensing. We hold the licensed retailers who sell tobacco accountable, not the people who buy or use these products. If a sales ban of flavored tobacco and nicotine products is adopted, there's no power here around law enforcement. There's no invitation for racist targeting of individuals who use these products, since the police have no power under our health code, which regulates tobacco sales. Next slide please. Another question we frequently hear, are people using a less harmful product if they use e-cigarettes? Certainly not for our kids. As Dr. Vines stated, we only wish for our kids to breathe air into their young lungs and developing brains. And this week, we should wish for clean air for all of us. As the Chair has stated, there's no dosing of nicotine through an e-cigarette or a vape. There's no endpoint like a cigarette. There's no marker to tell the person when they're done. Individuals are often using more nicotine and taking an easy hit constantly, sometimes hundreds, even thousands of times a day. This product, Flume Float Strawberry Mango, says it is 5% nicotine and up to 3,000 puffs. What does that even mean? It means a constant steady intake of an addictive drug and all the toxins that make up that flavoring. The Food and Drug Administration has still not approved vaping as a quitting method. There are many medically-approved methods to help people quit smoking. The idea is to reduce nicotine addiction through patches, gums, and even pharmaceuticals to help stop the craving. A large research study showed that adults who add vapes to their smoking are actually 83% less likely to entirely quit nicotine compared to those adults who use only cigarettes. So adding vaping to smoking may serve as a crutch that prevents a person from actually ending their addiction. Next slide please. Another question, does vaping lead to smoking? So let's talk about the idea of transitioning from one tobacco product to another. Many adults who use vapes state that they've transitioned from cigarettes. Research shows that those adults who vape have a 15% higher chance of a stroke than those who do not. Vaping is not harmless. For youth, research shows that youth who experiment with vapes early on are more likely to try smoking later in life. No surprise, since they've trained their developing brains to crave the regular intake of nicotine. Again, vaping is not harmless. Youth who have never smoked cigarettes but who have used e-cigarettes or vapes when they were 14 years old had more than a five times higher odds of initiating smoking by the age of 17. Vaping is not harmless. Next slide please. So how do we stop tobacco use by youth once and for all, whether flavored or not? Experts in public health agree that a variety of approaches are needed to finally end youth tobacco addiction. These include policies, like the one we're proposing, to ban the sale of fruit, menth, menthol, and candy-flavored tobacco and nicotine products, as well as continued education, quitting programs, and continuing to hold the tobacco industry responsible for the harm it is doing. Currently, our Don't Lean on Nicotine Youth Vaping Quit Program is underway, and these are images from that campaign. Your kids may be seeing our social media placements. We are not the demographic that would be seeing those placements on social media, just so you know. So if you haven't seen them, it's because you're not our target audience. But you may have seen the billboards or the bus benches that are also out in our communities with these images. This campaign utilizes a text-to-quit tool to meet kids where they are at. This is one example of the work we're doing to end the epidemic of youth tobacco use. But we need many more strategies, a policy such as banning the sale of flavored tobacco and nicotine products. We hope you'll consider this policy. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions when Jessica says it's time for questions, and I'm going to turn it back to Jessica. Thank you.
And I believe that if, if Hawa, Hawadogo, if you're out there, she was going to add her voice to this as well.
There she is.
Oh, there, yeah. Welcome.
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Hawadogo. I live in northeast Portland, and I'm here today because I have witnessed how early menthol use can cause addiction to nicotine products and also difficulty quitting. I saw my middle school and high school friends who had never smoked a cigarette in their life become addicted to menthol products like Backwoods, Jules, Hookah, Swishers, because they thought that these products were smoother and safer and less addicting, plus they had better flavors. It was just easier to go into a flavored cigar or tobacco product than to go directly into a more harsh tasting one. As an African-American woman who grew up in Multnomah County and works hand-in-hand with community health workers and youth, I've seen what these products have done to my community. Menthol products especially have been marketed to Black people since slavery, especially with the creation of X cigarettes and the marketing of the Black middle class using menthol-related products. Data from the CDC also shows that between 1980 and 2018, the span of about 38 years, 157,000 African-Americans died prematurely because of menthol cigarettes. And according to the Center for Black Health and Equity, every year, 45,000 Black people die from preventable smoking-related deaths. This is an issue because the majority of Black people who smoke cigarettes, smoke menthol cigarettes, about 80%, 5% of Black people who smoke choose to smoke menthol cigarettes. With the 2009 Tobacco Control and Family Prevention Act, it left a loophole for menthol products to be, to still be out there and target the Black community. As we can see, menthol-related products are advertised more in Black communities, and there is a higher concentration of sellers in Black communities. If you look at southeast or eastern Portland, you'll see a lot more smoke shops, a lot more convenience stores than you even see grocery stores and parks. Survey shows that 93% of Black adults who do smoke use menthol cigarettes the first time that they ever smoked, as opposed to 45% of white adults. Menthol has just made it, smoking a lot harder to quit because ment, oh, people who smoke menthol cigarettes are often trying. They try to quit a lot more than people who don't, but they have more difficulties with quitting, being that it's more addicting and also having access to services that help with smoke cessation and getting healthcare for lung cancer. Right now, Black people are less likely to get quality treatment and care from healthcare agencies related to lung cancer. One in 17 Black men have a chance of dying from lung cancer in America, while one in 26 Black women have a chance of dying in lung cancer. We've seen this policy get passed in over 300 localities in states like Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island, even Georgia and California have restricted, restricted the sales of tobacco products. And so it's time for Multnomah County to pass restrictions on menthol products to protect our youth, our future adults, and also advance racial, individual health, and environmental health equity, especially because cigarette butts are the most littered products. For us to really care for Black and Brown lives, we must also care for Black and Brown lungs. And a policy restricting menthol-related products would be ideal for our community.
Thank you, Hawa. I didn't fully introduce you. Could you introduce your role on the Achieve Coalition as well?
Yes, my name is Hawadogo. I am a co-facilitator for the Achieve Coalition. I work at Upstream Public Health, where we work to create smart policies with our local community health workers and partners to create smart policies that help benefit the overall well-being of Black and Brown people of color in Multnomah County.
Thank you so much. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cheryl Carter from our Public Health Advisory Board.
Chair and all others. All I've heard this morning is a reason for us to do what we're doing. And what I know from Ms. Jessica, Ms. Carrie, is that the things that we are getting ready to embark on will give our youth a chance. And, and that's where I'm speaking from this morning, is giving us a chance, giving them a chance. Because in, growing up, I've seen a lot of those chances taken away. And now I'm seeing the youth chances are being taken away. I'm on McFAB's board. Some of you may recognize me and not, it's been a while. I'm also a community leader who's been a part of the Smoke Free Campaign that we have here in Oregon. And the things I'm seeing and hearing, to me, it touches on the homeless crisis. So to me, we're in a crisis to save the youth. And I'm one of those that will speak up, that will use my voice when others cannot, will not. But that's not me. I'm one of those people, leaders, that get involved in my community, and not just my community. I live uptown, or downtown, whichever one they want to call it. But I reach out to a lot of different communities. And the things that we are fighting for is to give youth a chance to develop. And those are the things that I'm hearing today, and those are the things that I'm sure you're hearing and taking into your consideration of banning this flavored thing. I've never been a smoker, and I'm grateful for that. But for those who are hooked onto this, and it is a hook, it's like being addicted to any other drug out there, and that includes alcohol, street drugs, pharmaceutical drugs. We need to continue to say to our youth that we care about you, and that's where I'm coming from today. I care about our youth. I care about this pretentious flavored cigarettes, e-cigarettes. Ms. Jessica on a drive here, she was telling me about Juul. And finally, they got beat in the courts. And the first time I heard Juul's name was when I first signed up with McFAB, and that's been a couple of years now. And I'm going, going to continue to fight them whenever I'm asked, to do a campaign, whenever I'm asked to come and speak to the Commissioners, even the city. I, I will not sit around and have these chances, which is my theme, taken away from the youth and all smokers who are trying to quit this thing. We know that quitting is bad. We know it, yeah, I should say, I know that quitting, it's not easy, is what I should say. It is not an easy thing. And if we, as a community or a village, as we say nowadays, if we come together and ban this flavored thing, because to me, that's what it is. It's a damn thing. It's a thing that's harming young people especially. And I just want to say again, give them a chance. And I wrote a little spoken words because that's who I am. I'm a poet. This is about chances. Chance. Chances, they say, aren't faith. Chances are given, some you simply take. Let's just take a chance. And to me, that speaks volume, even though, you know, it's short, but it's, it speaks a lot of volume of what we are trying to do here today. And as I read the presentation from Ms. Jessica and Ms. Carrie, I noticed that some of my old hood, I'll say, in California, one of them being Santa Cruz, California, got on board with this thing. And they are one of those communities that, when I lived there, I didn't see them get involved a lot. And now I think they're going to give them a chance, just like Multnomah. Let's give Multnomah kids a chance to, to grow like we have, however we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl.
Thank you.
We're happy to take any questions.
Awesome, excellent. Thank you. Appreciate all of you this morning. Commissioners, time now for questions and comments, and we can talk about next steps. We'll start with you, Commissioner Jai Paul.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Jessica, Carrie, Hawa, and Cheryl, and in particular Hawa and Cheryl for sharing your stories and for the work you do with Achieve and McFAB. Really, really appreciate it. You know, I'll just, I do have a couple of questions, but I'll start by saying I'm, I'm glad that we are back on track with moving this forward. It has been a long time. I thought it made complete sense to take that pause while we were digesting and analyzing the Washington Court decision. And now that we've established that it doesn't apply, I, you know, I think this briefing is really timely. So a couple of questions. You know, a number of the comments that we received on the survey had to do with, talked about vaping as a way of cessation. And I was, I was really interested in the slide that says that flavor bans actually increase quitting attempts, and then interested in the slide that mentioned working with partners to act, increase access- to increase access to culturally appropriate quitting services. So could you talk a little bit about our work on cessation and what increasing that works looks like? In other words, will we be adding more resources to cessation efforts? You know, how will we be working with our partners to support? I like the idea of supporting a flavor ban with the support for quitting as well. So could someone talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm going to ask Carrie to speak to our local work that crosses over multiple programs at the county. But just, it probably goes without saying that obviously, the interest in reducing smoking and increasing quitting is a strategic objective of virtually every healthcare organization in the United States. It contributes to, smoking contributes over to over well, well over 12% of healthcare expenditures. And as I mentioned, in Multnomah County is the unique driver in all of our leading causes of death and years of life lost. So while we do have programs that Carrie can talk about, I would just note that, again, every major healthcare organization and public health organization has a, you know, key strategy around this. Do you want to talk a little bit about?
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. We're actually at a really exciting time here in Oregon. So in January of this year, new taxes went into effect on vape products, actually last year. And that revenue is now flooding out to our community-based organizations as they take on work, joining us in fighting commercial tobacco and raising social equity and health equity. So we're really excited. And I think there's going to be a lot more action to talk about next year as these organizations receive their funding from the state and start to implement their activities based on what their community needs most.
Great, thank you. That is really good to hear, Carrie, because, you know, the question of resources was was obviously, is obviously a key question. So that's great. Another question around, so, you know, and we talked a little bit about this when you briefed me last week, Jessica, but some of the other comments make the connection or draw a parallel to other flavored products, flavored alcohol, cannabis, other things that are also harmful to health, and say, well, you're not regulating those, so why are you regulating this? Could you, could you, could you address that question?
Sure. You know, I would say that there's multiple, multiple issues related to drivers of poor health outcomes. I'll just go back to the statement I've made a couple of times repeatedly, which is that tobacco and flavored tobacco is uniquely positioned across all of our major health indicators in terms of leading causes of death, years of life lost, and racial health inequities. So in that way, it is almost completely unique in being a universal driver for what we're seeing in Multnomah County and nationwide. That does not mean that there aren't other things that are in the community that cause harm to health. But I'm, I'm a big believer in picking somewhere, pick somewhere and start based on both our own health data, but also, as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the clear articulation from the community about this particular policy being a priority for well over a decade to address some of the key health disparities. So there are many other things that we can and hope to do in the future to protect the health of the community. This one is, this particular policy is above, way and above one that has incredible impact across all of our health indicators.
Thank you. I appreciate, and you have said that. And I think the slides, that the data that you've shown us says it. I know we've seen it before, but, you know, number one preventable cause of early death, the data on the number of youth that are vaping and the fact that it is absolutely a bridge into smoking. And I will say that the quotes that you showed us were painful, both, both of them, I won't repeat them, but both with respect to targeting based on race and with respect to targeting on youth. And, you know, one of the other, one of the other concerns, I won't say argument, one of the other concerns we've heard is, well, this is a policy that will most and disproportionately impact folks of color. And it seems to me that to say that we don't do something about harmful impacts that were created by racist policies in the first place means that we just perpetuate their impact. So, you know, I do think the data is absolutely convincing in terms of why, why this and why now? And the answer to why now is because it has been a long time coming. I'm also struck by the data on youth access. 25% of the time, our investigators were sold these products, tobacco products illegally. And, you know, I think another suggestion we've heard is, well, why not simply restrict access to these establishments to people over the age of 21? And it seems to me that that data really answers the question to say that if 25% of our inspectors are being sold products now, simply raising the limit, the age limit for people to enter these establishments isn't, isn't going to be effective. So that was really interesting. So one last question. You know, I do, I do realize the impact this will have on businesses, and particularly on small businesses. So can you talk a little bit about kind of the ramp, you know, the ramp up or ramp down, I suppose, process? Are you thinking of a period of time in which, you know, folks would be able to, are you thinking sell off their product or change what they're selling? What are your thoughts on how we implement this in terms of timing and impact on small businesses?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Our recommendation would be to reflect back on when you implemented tobacco retail licensing. So in Multnomah County, we adopted tobacco retail licensing in November of 2015. It went into effect July 1 of 2016. However, the Chair gave us direction at that time that we were not to enforce on the tobacco retail licensing rules until January of 2017. So we had a very long ramp up. Please remember that in 2015, Oregon did not, the rest of Oregon did not have tobacco retail licensing. So we knew that we needed to work with our retailers in order to inform them so that they could make the changes necessary to their business model. The same would hold here. We would like that time for retailers to be informed and understand what products they can sell and cannot sell and how to adjust their business model.
Great. Thank you so much for that. And I think the education-forward approach you always take was really evident in the way that you talked about how you would go about enforcing even once that period began. So again, thank you all so much for this work. I know it's been a really long time coming. And I'm just very proud to be about to take action on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, first of all, Jessica and Carrie, for this presentation. This was really helpful to me. I appreciate the questions that you answered. And I know several of the questions that I had, you were presenting information on. And I think the one of the things that I felt was most helpful was, Jessica, your reply, you know, to Commissioner Jai Paul, but was also reflected somewhat in the slides about the fact that tobacco and flavored tobacco is uniquely positioned, you know, across all of the major health indicators. And as we're looking at, you know, how we prevent leading causes of death, life lost, all of that, like, this is, this is it. This is what we can target for that. We've had conversations, I've had conversations with others about, for me, you know, as we're considering taking steps like this one, where we're banning a currently available product, we really need to have a good reason to do that because it is something that when government ever takes that step to, you know, take away access to something, we really need to be, understand why we're doing it and that the benefits of what we're getting outweigh the action we're taking, you know, in terms of availability and people's access to anything. So that, to me, was the most helpful for that. I also, you know, really appreciate the lifting up of the way that these products have been directly targeted to blacks and Native American communities. I remember when I was growing up, there were so many, I'd look through my mom's magazines, and there were very women-specific ads as well. And I mean, my mom now was a smoker for years and now has emphysema, right? And so I think that there is, and she's also Mexican, right? So these were like kind of double targeting that she had in different ways. And now we're seeing that, how they're really insidiously almost targeting youth, right? With, and, you know, and I think we've seen this over and over again with the tobacco industry, where they know about something, know the impacts of something, and yet give other reasons for their actions, even though, and, and those quotes that you shared were really, were really clear on that. I also just want to thank Hawa and Ms. Carter. Thank you so much for your testimony, for being here today, for the work that you are both doing on this, on this issue and the way that you're really focused on the impacts to your community and how you can fight against that. I had actually started typing down in my notes about chances. And then you went ahead and like gave a really powerful poem about, you know, really encapsulating the importance of that. And so thank you for those today. And I know we have a lot of people here who are not testifying, but are here in support of a flavored tobacco ban. And so just want to acknowledge and appreciate everyone who is here today and has been working on this issue for years and years. I think that it's, you know, you have done a very good job, I think, in answering questions and really making the case of why we need to do this. And also, if we don't do this, what we're looking at and seeing, you know, devastating health impacts for decades for people here in Multnomah County. My hope is that any action that we take as a board is impetus for further and broader action for Oregon. So, thank you.
Commissioner Myron?
Thank you. Thank you all here today for this briefing, for your perseverance. In moving this policy forward, it was interesting to see, you know, the billboards from a decade ago about hookahs. And I know this has been so long in the coming. And I want to say special thank yous as well to Hawa and to Ms. Carter. And I, I, as with so much with everything that you do in public health, in regard to this as well, it is, it is essential not to be just going out there and doing a ban or saying, look, the data shows us that this is better for everyone, so we're just going to do it. That is not a public health approach. We use information about health and about, you know, the leading preventable early causes of death to inform a broad, multifaceted approach that focuses on education and outreach and engagement. And that is culturally specific, that meets the needs of all the people that are going to be impacted. And you, your office does a really brilliant approach of that. And we've just seen it in so many, I mean, with most recently COVID, et cetera. But we've seen this throughout the years. And, and I just want to express appreciation for that. And it is demonstrated very clearly here today with members of the community here. And so thanks, thank you to all of you being here today. And, you know, I, I think, we, I'm not sure we could actually, I was going to say, sort of said it a lot here, but you can't say it enough, the impact of starting use of tobacco in youth and, and what that means for later in life in terms of start later smoking and later addiction and the horrible impacts on health. Where death is only the tip of the iceberg, there are so many horrific ramifications of smoking that we see, you know, I see them in the ER constantly. So many people impacted. It is emphysema, it is the respiratory diseases, it's secondhand smoke, it's head and neck cancers. It's, it's all of it. So just appreciate this. I have a question about engagement. I really like the, the ads and appreciate they're not, I don't see them because they're not, I'm not the target audience. I'm not a youth. But how you are engaging with the school districts and, and youth in the schools, like are there presentations? Are there kids groups in the schools that you're working with to elevate these so peers can be talking to peers about this? Could you speak to some of that?
Yeah, I can, I can kind of do the meta, and then I'll turn it over to Carrie for the specific, in the specifics in the, not just the tobacco program, but we also have the adolescent health program sitting in the same unit. And the purpose there is to do cross-programmatic collective impact work. But needless to say, the schools are a major partner, not only the schools themselves, the districts, but also our school-based health centers, all of the work that we do in partnership with both ICS and school-based health centers and behavioral health, for that matter, our entire department. This is a cornerstone issue where we are braiding together those different strategies of working with the schools in different settings. But Carrie, do you want to talk about the?
Sure. Well, in particular, I was going to talk about Don't Lean on Nicotine, Go Vapeless, our text to quit program and our partnerships with schools. So that campaign has been a long time in coming. And we actually launched it in spring of this year across all of our school districts, getting posters out. In fact, some of you at back-to-school night this year, because we did send more posters to our schools, you may have seen these posters in the schools. And of course, they are in our student health centers as well. So those partnerships continue. And also, not only within the public health division, but across behavioral health as well. I want to mention our colleague with the Alcohol Drug Education and Prevention Program, who does lead student groups. She has one at Lincoln High School, for example. They've taken on tobacco as a cause in the past, and they've distributed our materials as well. So there are all sorts of activities going on out there. And we just want to get the word out about this tool to as many youth as we possibly can so that they can access the text to quit.
That's super great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and I do, Ms. Carter, you said, you said so much so perfectly. I loved your poem, but, you know, give our youth a chance. That's really what it's about. What more need we say? A lot more, but that says it perfectly, encapsulates so much. And Jessica, this is something, you mentioned that PPS filed a lawsuit against Juul. And, and we could talk about this offline as well, but has the county opined or considered joining or providing support as the local public health authority in that lawsuit?
I have not been asked. I'm also not a lawyer. And I don't, I may talk like one sometimes, but I'm not a lawyer. So we have not been asked, that I'm aware of, to be a part of that. I mean, I've seen the same press coverage that you have. And they have established quite a bit of a position on it. So we have not been asked.
Okay. It just seems like a really great opportunity to elevate some of this as well, whether or not it, you know, that is, it's like when we filed suit against the opioid manufacturers distributors. That is, it's so important to go after the culprits in this. And, and one other just, one other question as well. You mentioned some of the studies that were showing a reduction in use when there were bans in place on the flavored tobacco products and, and with vaping. But it looked like, I think there was one I wrote, I think it was like in San Francisco, the study, it was a reduction of 81% to 69%, something like that. But, and a lot, that is great. And we need to do everything we can in all these different ways. Sounds like a lot still are using. And I'm just curious if there was any look into where kids are getting the products?
I'm not aware of the specifics of that study, but we certainly can follow up on it. One thing that I would like to say is, to your point, something as invasive and persistent as tobacco needs a multi-pronged approach. There isn't going to be a one fixed thing. This particular policy, though, we get much more bang for the buck, so to speak, in terms of moving upstream. Carrie, do you know any of the specifics about? We can, we can get it for you. Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I totally support that and get that. And, and maybe looking at some of the, you know, might be a way to also preempt some of those ways that people are getting around those as well. And, and I appreciate what Commissioner Vega Peterson said as well in terms of when we are looking at restricting access to a product that is currently available, we need to have a high bar. And, I mean, I believe we have far exceeded that bar. But, but it is really important to do due diligence. And you have done such a fabulous job of that over years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Yes, it has been a long time coming, but I also want to remind people that there's, there is several reasons for that. And one of them is that we had steps to take before we could get to this point. One of them is the tobacco... One of them is the tobacco retail licensure program that we see when communities don't have it, they are more at risk for doing the follow-up measures like Washington County. So, I was reminded with the conversations about youth years ago in the, I think it was David Douglas High School, where we had a hearing, and we had all those youth show up, and I'll never forget that phrase, "Do us a favor, ban the flavor." That, the youth came up with that, and that's perfect for what we're talking about now. So, as far as next steps, we realize that this is just a briefing today and that we haven't had a chance, I mean, we have had a chance to hear from the public for many years, decades we've been talking about this. But having more public hearings where people can actually participate, because as you know, with a briefing like this, we don't have public comment. So, we're in the process of scheduling, you know, there's some things going on right now that make it a little difficult to find time on people's calendars to schedule briefings, but we will have daytime and an evening briefing that we're getting on the calendar before December is our goal. So, you will hear more from us when we've nailed down the exact dates for those hearings, but more, so more to come. And I just want to, again, express my appreciation to all of you for participating today and to all of you in the audience who have made your voices heard and who are showing up today with your shirts on and your, your voices may be silent for now, but not silent often. So, thank you so much, everyone. And that concludes our board agenda. We do have some time now for non-agenda items. Commissioner Vega Peterson, do you have things you want to share?
I do not have anything this week. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Myron?
I just wanted to call out something from last week that I wasn't able to call out since our board meeting went long. But just, I had an opportunity to tour Barbie's Village on Indigenous Peoples' Day last week, and I was really amazed by that. It's at the Presbyterian Church of Laurelhurst in northeast. And for people who may be unfamiliar with it, it's a tiny home village or sort of an alternative shelter transitional model aimed at housing and helping Indigenous parents and children. And the effort is a collaboration between our, the Future Generations Collaborative, the Presbyterian Church, Great Spirit Church, and others. And this is just exactly the kind of model we need to help address the homelessness crisis in our community. And I am, I was just blown away by seeing the model, talking to so many partners, and seeing the many, many ways this village will change lives. So, I look forward to the county supporting these efforts and to watching them move forward. I also want to call out the Veterans Day Parade. It is back for the first time in two years, and I serve as the board liaison to the Veterans Task Force, and it has been a privilege to assist in planning this year's Veterans Day Parade. Everyone loves a parade. This one's going to be amazing. Thank you to Tabitha from my office for doing so much groundwork in getting this to happen and working with communities so hard for getting this going. And we are looking for sponsors, volunteers, and still accepting group registrations to march in the parade. So, to learn more, you can visit veteransdaypdx.org. And that is, I think that's it for me.
Commissioner Jaya Paul?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a couple of things. One is that this afternoon, I'm going to be on a panel hosted by Portland State to talk about the anniversary of the City of Portland's 1972 Downtown Plan, but then more specifically how PSU as an urban-serving university can work and collaborate with government. So, that should be an interesting conversation, and you can find a link on my Facebook page or Twitter. And then this Saturday, we'll be joining Self-Enhancement, Inc. at their Purple Mile Walk in honor of October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. SEI is one of our critical partners in our work to stop domestic violence and to work with survivors. Their program serves hundreds of black residents and focuses on healing, and I think this promises to be a really moving event. It starts at 10:30 Saturday, actually, it starts at 10:30, goes till 2:00, and you can register on their website at selfenhancement.org. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a lot of, a lot of things to celebrate at Multnomah County, and we don't often take the time to stop and thank our employees, and several of them have received awards recently. So, I just want to give a shout out to three of them. Sylvia Tanner, who works in our Office of Sustainability, received an award last week at the annual Citizen Utility Board Conference. She was awarded the 2022 Consumer Champion for her work at the county advocating for low-income ratepayers. Sylvia is a star. We are very lucky to have her. Another person who just happens to be here in our boardroom right now, who is fabulous as well, Charlene McGee. She's in the Health Department's Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health, as we know it, REACH. She was recognized by the Street Trust at the annual Alice Awards as the 2022 Elizabeth Jennings Graham Transportation Justice and Equity Award recipient, and that was for her work, her leadership of the REACH's team's development of the 2021 Transportation Crash and Safety Report. It's at the intersection of transportation, health, race, and justice, and their ongoing work to support Black and African immigrant communities through the promotion of physical activity. Congratulations, Charlene. I'm so proud of you. And last, but definitely not least, Violet Larry is a clinical nurse supervisor and a program manager with Healthy Birth Initiatives. And last week, she won the March of Dimes Heroes in Action Maternal and Child Health Equity Leadership Award. Plus, she deserves an extra award because she has been with the county for 32 years. So, please help us recognize our three fabulous Multnomah County employees making us proud every day. We are so lucky to get to work with you all. That is all we have on our agenda. We will be back next week with more fun things. See you then.